I call to order the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and the City of Victorville. The first item is the public comment. Mary Nun, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
A second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
May Cabralis, all of the closed session items are fully enumerated on the agenda. To the extent we have reportable action, we will come out after the closed session or at the beginning of the regular session and report that. Also, I do not need to go into closed session on item number two. Bankruptcy Court continued the matter, so there's nothing new to report on item two.
Good to know.
On item two, we don't need to discuss item two right now. The bankruptcy court on its own motion continued that item for a while.
Item one and three? Or, yeah, item three.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Victorville City Council. This video is intended to provide you with a brief overview of the protocol to follow when attending a city council meeting and instructions for addressing the city council. As you enter the foyer, you will see a table which will have copies of the agendas for the city council meeting as well as the other boards on which the city council serves. The agendas for these meetings will assist you in following along with the city council as they conduct the business of the city. In addition, you will find white public comment cards that you will need to complete and submit to the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting if you wish to speak on any particular agenda item. It is requested that you include your name, address, and phone number in order that the staff or council members may communicate with you in the future if necessary. The city clerk will turn the public comment cards into the mayor. The mayor will then call the name of each person submitting a card when it is their turn to speak on an agenda item. As their name is called, each speaker should approach the podium, wait to be acknowledged by the mayor to speak, and then clearly state their name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and their comments should be directed at the mayor and not to members of the audience. Please note that the first item on each agenda is titled "Public Comment." This section provides an opportunity for people to address the city council on an item that does not appear on the regular agenda. In accordance with state law, the city council is unable to take any action on an item that is not properly agendized. Lastly, as a matter of courtesy and in order to maintain decorum, it is requested that meeting attendees turn off your cellphone or place it on vibrate during the conduct of the meeting. Thank you for attending the meeting and for your interest in the city of Victorville. We hope you will find your experience attending a city council meeting to be an enjoyable and informative one.
May Cabralis, the council had a closed session at 5:00. There was no reportable action as a result of the closed session.
At this time, I would like to open up the meeting for the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and the City Council of the City of Victorville. As customary, our first action will be the invocation, and that will be given by Pastor Morgan Taylor, the Gate Church of the High Desert, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Captain Reynolds, our police chief. Please rise.
You will all please bow your head and close your eyes. Dear Lord, I just pray that your hand will be upon this meeting, and it will be upon the city of Victorville. Lord, I ask that you will guide us, and that it will be your will that will be done and be determined in this council. I ask that you have mercy upon us, and that your sovereign hand will just cover each and every one of us, Lord. Lord, I pray that you will raise Victorville to be an example for our surrounding cities and for the entire High Desert. I do feel that Victorville leads the way for the surrounding cities, and I believe that God has placed it like that to be the example. So, Lord, I ask that you will let Victorville be the example for our surrounding cities, and that only your will will be done in this meeting, Lord. I ask that you will bless it and guide it, and just let it prosper in your mighty name. Amen.
I had the privilege recently of attending a Public Works open house, and this was for fourth graders. There were about 185 of these young students that Public Works had an open house for on that day, and they were shown all the operations of the Public Works. Animal control, the mechanics, traffic control, every element within the operation of Public Works. Besides the open house, there was also an essay contest, and we had three winners. Already presented, the third place, Mark Culberson from Delray School, who can be here. He placed third, but he was giving his certificate last week, and I was very proud to do that on behalf of the city of Victorville and the Public Works Department. We also have Zaraya Higgins, Liberty School. She plays first. Zaraya, would you please come up? I would also like to have Public Works representatives go forward. The first thing we have is a certificate of achievement. On behalf of the city of Victorville Public Works Department, this certificate is presented to Zaraya Higgins in recognition of outstanding accomplishments in writing a first-place essay for the eighth annual Public Works Day event. And again, congratulations, Zaraya. And I'll let you say a few words, then I'm going to let our animal control officers say a few words, okay?
Good evening. I just want to thank my family for being here, and I'm just kind of scared right now. It was really fun to learn about what people do around our community, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you, Zaraya. Zaraya has her, you know, not responsibly, but what she thought was the greatest show out there for her was the animal control presentation, so she did write a lot of real detail about what she'd learned, but I'd like to have Mike talk to you about that.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, council and mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, in animal control, usually we're always faced with some negativity or someone doesn't want us at their door, and every time we have an opportunity to come out to the schools or the schools to visit us, it really is heartwarming, and it makes this job a wonderful thing to do. And this is what service is about. And for those who don't know, Victorville's animal care and control, it's not just about enforcing the laws that relate to animals, it's about giving back to our community, and I'm real proud to do so, and thank you, Zaraya, for recognizing us.
Thank you. Thank you, Zaraya. Thank you very much. We also have Gilberto Peraza Martinez from Galileo Academy. He took second place. Gilberto? And I would also like someone from the, he showed the mechanic section, so I would like to have someone from the mechanic section.
Gilberto, it's my pleasure to present this certificate of achievement. On behalf of the city of Victorville Public Works Department, this certificate is presented to you in recognition of outstanding accomplishment in writing a second-place essay for the eighth annual Public Works Day. Once again, congratulations.
I want to say that, I want to thank everybody that came, and I also want to thank these two men for giving me some inspiration in the mechanics.
Thank you, Gilberto.
Just like to say, it was a great pleasure having all those students show up and actually showing them what we do with the city of Victorville Public Works. Hopefully, they all learned a lot, and I would like to thank this young man for a good essay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations again. Again, as I mentioned, I was out there that day, and I had a lot of fun with the 185 kids. We had lunch, then went through the Rama Rama to learning all the stations, and it was very a good experience, and I'm really, was real happy that I was asked to be out there. I really had an enjoyable day, and it's part of what Public Works is doing, is giving back to the community. So, once again, congratulations to the winners, and I commend the Public Works Department. Thank you. We also have a proclamation, and July is Park and Recreation Month, and I would like to have the following facilities maintenance. Adam Franklin, Recreation Services. Janie Lynch, Golf Clubhouse. Audrey Flores. Parks Golf Maintenance. Alfredo Garnica. This proclamation is presented to the Parks and Recreation Department, Community Services, actually, and the proclamation is lengthy, so I won't read everything, but the last part says that therefore, I, Rudy Cabralis, Mayor of the city of Victorville, will hereby join the other members of the city council in urging all residents to enjoy and recognize the social, physical, mental, economic, and environmental and community benefits derived from our many services and facilities offered, which provides something of value to everyone, and to recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month. And again, I'm very proud of the city of Victorville and its park system and its recreation system. I've been here for 33 years, and we have the best park system or recreation system of anywhere. In fact, I used to park this Fourth of July for a while. So, I'd like to congratulate you and present this proclamation to you, and have you twenty, you just said a few words.
Good evening. It's an honor to get this award for all facility staff. We're honored, and thank you.
Just wanted to say that all of us, the four of us here represent the various divisions within community services, and we share a common mission, and our mission is to improve the quality of life in Victorville. And I think, you know, the maintenance of our facilities, the offering of our programs, the running of activities and things, that's what we're accomplishing, and hopefully, you're all taking advantage of it.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and let everyone know of the programs that we offer at Westwood Creek Golf Course. We have yearly golf tournaments that go on for churches and other organizations. We have lessons, facilities, and just for all age groups, and thank you.
Yes, I want to say thank you to everybody, and everybody is welcome to the parks.
In fact, in fact, he was at the park when I was there, and he saved me a space. Thank you very much. I will now open up the public comment section, and this will be for all the agendas that I enumerated. And so I will open up the public comment, which is section one, and we have three cards for item number one. Anthony Castelicio.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Anthony Castelicio, and I live in the city of Phelan, or the unincorporated city of Phelan at this time. The reason I stand before you this evening is medical cannabis dispensing. I understand that we've passed a 45-day moratorium, which some may look at as negative, but I see it as a really good opportunity to further allow myself time to coagulate my business and help to further educate everyone on the council as to the benefits of this type of organization. So, let me just begin. I have so, so much to say, and three minutes is barely enough time for anyone to get a true point across, but I'll do my very best, and we'll be dealing with one another much more in the coming weeks, so I'm confident of that. First, good evening, council members. City manager, we're missing one, I understand. Good evening, Mr. Attorney. Tonight, I'll be speaking briefly in regards to the unique opportunity we've been afforded by Proposition 215, as the California voters have enacted this. In 1996, this was done. It's called the Compassionate Use Act. You guys are somewhat familiar with it. I'm not going to go into detail about that at this time. What I will go into detail about is a portion of my vision. It's all I can afford to tell you tonight. In the coming weeks, I look forward to the opportunity to work hand-in-hand with the council, with the city attorney, and the planning department, and the community as well, as well as local law enforcement. I want to maintain a very transparent process so that everyone knows that this is done above board, and it's truly a benefit to the community. I want to work with the city council and the community, the planning department, so that we can establish a thorough yet reasonable set of regulations by which we will govern the conduct of all credible and legitimate dispensaries within the city of Victorville. The High Desert Patients Group, a nonprofit corporation, is committed to providing and maintaining safe and accessible location from which legitimate and verified patients can obtain affordable medication, as well as to provide additional benefits to the members, just to name a few. Discounts for low-income patients, we're not profiteering here by any means. Professionally provided acupuncture, massage, counseling services. These are people that come to you many times, they're in pain, they might need some counseling, they may be under severe stress, so we want to counsel these people and help them, and that would thus help the community. Also, we will have well-trained staff members who are very well informed about the medications they provide, as well as for recognizing and dealing with signs and symptoms of abuse and misuse. We feel this is very important. The list goes on. As for the benefits, what we would provide to community, I don't have the time to get into everything now, unfortunately. As for the city of Victorville and its council, I'm well aware that our resources are stretched and that our members and staff are already overburdened. I want to provide for you my time and the time of other professionals that I can assemble so that we can get through this together and make sure that it really is something positive. I believe that it is, and I believe that it will be in this community. So, I offer my service to you. I'll explain this in greater detail at a later time, when I have more time, most likely, on paper. Additionally, I know that there will be many questions in regards to the opening of such a business within this community. However, I am prepared to answer all questions and deal with all concerns honestly and with integrity. That is how I do business.
Your time is up.
My time is up. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Dorothy Miller?
My name's Dorothy Miller. I have a few problems going on here in the city. I've read the paper, and there's been a lot of things going on that really should not be going on. We had water running down Sycamore. Three or four days in a row, we called in. We got three different answers of what the problem was. Now, why can't we get everybody together so at least we know the right answer? Was it somebody vandalizing? Was it somebody doing work up there, the contractor? What was it? We have no idea. We don't get true answers from the city anymore, and I don't think that's fair to us at all. My number two is the budget. Have we ever got a budget? Now, one of the members asked for a quarterly report. Did he get it? Not that I know of. I haven't heard a word about it, and I think we really need to get this budget out and find out exactly where we stand, because we're not getting the right answers. Two members sitting up on the council, one of them isn't here tonight. I feel they have got us into this problem financially, and I feel they need to step down or do whatever they have to do to clear this mess up. It's not going to get cleared up overnight. It's too deep in the hole. Now, you really need to work on what's going on. Now, I would like to know, there was not supposed to be any travel. Well, one is out of town, out of the country. I don't know if we're paying for it or not. One went to Mexico. I don't know if we paid for that, too. The other one went to Vegas, and I'd like to know if we paid for that, too. I mean, general public is getting ripped off like you cannot believe from this council, and it needs to stop, and it needs to stop now. Thank you.
I have Joseph Vale.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Vale, and about the only time you see me here is when I perceive a problem. There's several little issues. First of all, I'd like to address one that happened about two years ago at the water agency hall across the street where the city council meeting over there, discussing business licenses for people who own rental properties. At that meeting, I was told very plainly by Mr. Mike Rothschild that it would not apply to me because I already had a city business license for doing my tax work. Behold, when it happened, guess we had to go through all the process for a city license. I don't appreciate being told things like that. Next thing I'd like to address, what this lady was talking about, financial mismanagement. I just saw the power plants, how many million dollars is that kind of mess in? And also, we have a railroad bed, very nicely built, but no railroad, excuse, no railroad track. Also, we have a huge city staff, and if you council people haven't been to city hall once in a while, just kind of walk around and take a look at things, you should, because you'll see a lot of people standing around doing not much of anything. And we have too many people with a payroll situation. We have right now, say, like 1.3 million for two weeks or something. The main issue that I came here tonight for is the VVWR. I talked with Rudy Cabralis at the VVWR meeting, and this was probably a couple weeks ago, and I had been on the phone several times with Scott Ferguson from the La Hantin group. I spoke with a gentleman named John across the street a couple of times concerning La Hantin. And what is transpiring, and Mr. Cox, I spoke with him on the phone about this, he was not aware of this, and I don't know if you staff members, I know Rudy should be, but we are having to put out $15 million for a treatment facility at the treatment plant that will basically kill chlorine. La Hantin has decided that we have to have zero emissions of chlorine from our plant, and yet we human beings can drink up to two parts per million chlorine. Our water system here in the town, they try to maintain it around six or seven, .6 or .7. The point being, with the economy is right now, the city of Victorville is in a deep financial hole brought on by what I consider to be some mismanagement, also a lack of tax base and revenue, and we now have people who are struggling to maintain homes, and we're going to start charging them an extra $7 a month to take chlorine out of the water so it doesn't go in the river. I don't know if you folks are aware of sand filtration or not, but the riverbed is one of the best filters in the world, and you put the water in the river, within a half a mile, you won't find any chlorine, or less, probably less, just a hundred yards.
I have 15 seconds, Joe.
Make your pardon?
15 seconds.
Okay. So, I think as a city, I've already been on the phone with La Hantin, maybe calling me back again tomorrow, talking to State Water Resource Control Board. This is a mandated issue, and none of us voted for it. Did any of you folks attend the meetings they had here in 2008? I didn't even hear about them. So, we're being dictated to it's going to cost our citizens $15 million, and I think that's wrong. I think the city of Victorville needs to stand up and fight that, and I, for one, am going to.
Thank you. Okay, well, now, going to the record agendas. The first one is the Library Board of Trustees. Do we have any revisions?
No revisions.
Consent calendar?
For approval.
Councilmember Allman, may I get a vote from you? Thank you.
Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority agenda and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority agenda, and our co-chair for the authorities is Mike Rothschild.
Revisions.
Revisions to the rail authority.
Move for approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
And the Airport Authority, again, any additions?
I'm sorry, may I get a vote from Councilmember Cabralis? Could I get a vote on that last item? Thank you.
Back to the Airport Authority?
No revisions.
For approval of the consent calendar? Move?
Second.
Number four is the request for a contract with the McAlpine Electrical Construction and Design in the amount of $99,555 for construction and associated rehabilitation of airfield electrical. CLA. For approval of the move?
Second.
Item number five, request to lease the US government for the building 521, 524, 555, 552, and 533 for the use of Truck Transportation Depot. Question, move for approval?
No for approval.
And item number six is a request to authorize the chairman to execute a consent assignment of lease with Leading Edge. That's our primary, one of our biggest employers out there for the painting of the aircraft.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Rothschild, I would request that this, assuming you approve this, that it be contingent upon our verifying that they have the certificate to do business in the state of California. They are at this point process of getting that. So, I would ask that your approval to the assignment be upon verification that they have been approved to do business in the state of California.
Incorporate that into the motion. Move for approval? Second. And agenda item number seven is request a approval of the loan agreement between SCLA-A and the Victorville Water District for $20 million. SCLA, 2007 housing bonds contingency upon approval of the National Community Assistance MOU.
Can I have a question on this item, please? All these transfers from different money departments transferring from one to another. This, I understand this housing, oh, Keith's up here, okay. What is the total of this wastewater treatment facility? Is it 15 million?
No, our project capital budget for the plant itself, both on and off-site, is $46 million. The plant itself, without off-site plumbing, is right around the $30, $31 million figure. But the total project being financed, total project cost being financed for the sewer plant on and off is $46 million.
Yeah, I understand that it was in the city's, it was supposed to be owned by the city. Now, we're transferring ownership to the Water District?
That has already been done at a previous action of the council. When we first presented to the council in February, it was originally contemplated exactly that, that the city would be responsible for owning, operating this plant. Due mainly to financial considerations, also due in part to the dissolution of the sanitary district. And given legal authorities that we determined were bestowed to the Water District as a part of its transfer to the city. So, we determined that the Water District doesn't, in fact, have the legal right to be the purveyor as it relates to wastewater. That entity being much more financially sound, we determined it better to have the function, the ownership, the functionality of the plant to be controlled and operated by them. In large part, there was financial considerations with respect to the stronger standing that the Water District was able to represent, especially by means of the audit that they actually had completed. To facilitate that whole transaction, the council also approved the actual lease by the city of the collection system to the Water District. That enables the Water District to collect all of the revenues from the ratepayers of the city. And the consideration for that by the Water District to the city is through residual receipts. So, what that really means is anything that's net, in terms of a net profit in the business world, that's what we would call it, that would then be available to pay back the city for the actual collection system.
Thank you, Keith. I wasn't quite clear where the, now...
Any other question?
And maybe if I can, because I want to be abundantly clear. I mean, this transaction is a long, drawn-out transaction, and it does require complete understanding and clarity with respect to the transaction, where it has been, where it is today, and where it's going. Through all of what I just mentioned, the Water District, at a previous meeting as well, approved a loan of $45 million. That in practice actually exhausts the large share of their cash. If it doesn't exhaust at all, I'm not sure what the exact cash position is today. So, when we approved the actual loan from the Water District, and it was an inter-fund loan. It was a loan within the Water District from its domestic operating fund to the wastewater fund that it created. That was a short-term, that was always intended to be a short-term mechanism to be taken out either by the intermediate financing that we're still pursuing, or some kind of bridge, like what we have before you here tonight. What we have here before you tonight is a bridge that frees up that $45 million encumbrance and reduces it to $25 million, to where we're actually using unencumbered housing bond money as an investment to help bridge that gap to still get you to the $45, $46 million number.
But the RDA is just loaning the money to the Water?
Technically, it's the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority loaning bond proceeds that it had received as a part of a bond issuance that was done in 2007. There is a contingency on this, of course, because this item is technically being held out of order with respect to the sequence of how things should occur. The appropriate thing to do, if the council were to approve this, is make this contingent upon the approval and the execution of the MOU under the RDA's agreement involving the Signature at Valley Center apartment community.
I said, this was like putting the cart before the horse, because I saw in the RDA what was coming up, and that's why I needed this to have. And I appreciate that, thank you.
Vice Chairman Rothschild, Mayor Cabralis, would we not be able to take both this item and item number four on the Water District agenda at the same time?
I didn't know if we wanted to mix.
Yes, you can absolutely do that.
They're complaining, okay.
If there's a motion per Keith, the motion for both would be contingent on the approval of the MOU with that signature.
Incorporate that into the motion for item number seven. A move for approval of item number seven, the loan agreement?
For on the Water District.
And number four on the Water District.
Second.
The floor has a comment card submitted for item number four on the Water.
There is no request for a loan agreement between these, are there, Keith?
I'm sorry, say that question.
A loan agreement? Is there a loan agreement between the Water District?
We're not on the Water.
Between SCLA and, there will be, yeah, we have to execute it.
Thank you.
Do we have a card where we're not on the Water District yet?
You wanted to take item four on the Water District simultaneously with this item for the request of Councilmember McCaffrey. I think if you want to do that, that's fine, but you may want to consider the public, the comment card.
Hold on.
On item number four.
Okay, we have Norm Miller on item number four for the Water District.
Mayor, council members. I guess I messed up a little bit here, but I picked up the papers up front, and I got two rail authorities instead of the SCLA. My paper is here, so I put down number four for Water. I should have put it down for SCLA. I don't know, does it make any difference now that the vote's been taken?
The council has the discretion to reconsider the vote if they wanted to do that at this time. So, I think it makes appropriate to hear your comments.
Well, I don't know if it'll make any difference. But to me, from what I've been able to read here, it just looks like we're getting into another one of those, I think somebody mentioned, putting the cart in front of the horse. Because do we have any guarantee that we're going to get this money back to the Water District? And now, you've combined the Water and the sewer districts together. I guess that's one way to put smokes and mirrors up front, so you can get the money that you want without doing it the way I feel it should be done. And the other question there was talk about interest on this loan. Is there going to be interest on this loan? Or is this a loan at all? Is it just transferring money back and forth until you get to where you want to be? I think, again, like I said, you're putting the cart in front of the horse. We got stung once before like this on the power plant. I hope we don't get stung again this time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, the security of the loan is treated as an investment, so it does bear an interest. In fact, we did attach a 7% interest rate to the loan involving SCLA and the Water District. A closing point that I think is related to the comment is with respect to what we're doing tonight, we're still not done. There's still the closure that we need to bring to the financing equation, which is what I've been calling the intermediate financing piece. And I call it that because it's expected to be a financing piece that has probably a five-year type term on it, to where we can use that to get the plant operational sustainable, to the point where we can actually restructure that financing and take it out with a tax-exempt piece. I know this has taken a lot longer than expected. The markets have not been working in our favor. We're currently working with two strategies right now. This bridge strategy actually gets us to probably a much more confident cash position to get the plant built. So, with respect to any concerns we initially had when we first embarked upon the funding plan as to whether or not we're going to have actual cash to spend going through construction, that issue is mitigated. Now, the risk element that we're dealing with is, how long is it going to take to make, in this case, the Water District whole and even the SCLA whole with respect to monies that it fronted? To answer the question with respect to the loan being, or the amount of money being loaned from the domestic enterprise fund to the Water District's wastewater enterprise fund, that also is a loan, that also has to get repaid back. And both pieces, the SCLA and the Water District domestic loan, are structured to get paid back. And the goal would to be to pay, the goal currently is to pay both of those pieces back with that intermediate financing piece that we're pursuing. Currently, we're on the market. We're actually on the street, trying to raise that entire project fund privately with external financing. There's been some questions as to sizing, and that's been an issue that I've been dealing with, which is to mean, not sure if we're able to raise the entire amount. We think we can, we have good indications right now that we can. But in the event we can't, one of the alternative strategies is to raise as much money privately as we can. And then, an item that we're going to bring before you, probably in a workshop setting at the next council meeting, would be discussion involving the EB5 Investor Visa Program. Because with that, we definitely envision that as being a type of program that could help raise the capital and help take out a large piece of that intermediate component.
Keith, and just to clarify, this is a loan of housing dollars that we have from the bond issuance in SCLA-A. It is not Water District funds. So, we're loaning from SCLA housing funds, because the housing's not going to be built right now due to the economy.
Correct.
And we're loaning those dollars over to the Water District, or, yeah, over to the Water District, thus reducing the amount that the Water District has to put up to actually build this facility. So, we're, before you asked the council for $45 million, now it's only $25 million. It's reduced to some $20 million because of this loan.
That's exactly correct.
I'm not sure Keith answered it. There are interest components on the loans of 7%, and it's a fully structured loan agreement.
Well, I think this will amaze the, maybe there's some confusion. There's not money being taken from the Water District. There's money into the Water District, so we can complete the project. We already voted?
Oh, yeah, we did. We voted in, we voted for item number four on the Waters. Unless there's anything else, that concludes the Airport Authority.
We now have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. No revisions?
No revisions.
Consent calendar?
No for approval.
Mayor Rothschild, may I get a vote from you? Thank you.
Item number four is a request to approve $2.5 million in leveraged funding to be successful in applying for a $10 million neighborhood stabilization program funding.
For approval?
Second.
Item number five, request to approve a memorandum of understanding by between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and its Signature VC Limited, suspending the Affordable Housing Agreement in multi-family project known as the Signature at Valley Center. And this, Keith, is what's going to release those funds?
That is correct. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item was put on the agenda in part to help balance the equation in funding the wastewater treatment plant. But more importantly, and the real primary reason why this was put on the agenda was just the reality, I think, that both ourselves and the developer started realizing with respect to what this project is and what maybe it needs to be. You'll recall that previously, we had approved an affordable housing agreement to build 128 moderate-rate apartments. Moderate was a technical definition that we applied to it to qualify the use of redevelopment housing funds for this project. But really, it was designed to a luxury standard, to a standard. Today, we're questioning as to whether or not, based upon market conditions, and based upon, you know, if we had any foresight in the future as to what market conditions would be. I think we're definitely concerned with respect to the product that we're building and the market suitability for that, say, 15 to 18 months from now, if the project were actually to get built. So, we worked with the developer. The developer, I still call them Southern California Housing. They're now called National Community Renaissance. John Seymour is the developer representing that project. He's here in the audience if you have any particular questions. But what we have agreed to is to generally re-scope the project and re-scope it in such a way that allows us flexibility to pursue a different type of project. Still going to be the same number of units, but we are looking right now to re-scope it to be more of an affordable nature to a mix of low- and moderate-income households. With that, that would avail different types of financing opportunities to the agency and to the developer, and, in essence, will help reduce the capital contribution that the agency would have to make to help make the project financially stable. What's happening here is basically a release of the encumbrance that was previously provided under that affordable housing agreement. The original encumbrance was to the order of about $23.6 million, and that was being provided to the project in the form of a residual receipts loan. Today, we've spent up to $1.5 million, right around $1.5 million. And that is actually productive money. A lot of it is value that can still be carried over into the re-scope project. That $1.5 million basically enabled us to get the project fully designed, fully entitled, and to the point of actually being able to pull permits. We are actually at a stage right now, if we did decide to pursue the project, we can actually pull a permit very shortly. I'd say tomorrow, but Bill Webb would probably disagree. It might take a week or so. It might take a week or so. On that regard, that leaves the remaining encumbrance of about $22 million. So what this item does is it frees up that encumbrance. It does recognize that we're going to have to spend a little bit of additional money going forward to re-scope the project. There are some issues not completely settled, but definitely, we have a comfort level with respect to having to restructure some of the financing commitments that were provided by Bank of America to the project. We've had discussions with them. They're working with us. And very generally, going forward, we're seeking, as a part of this action, we'll reserve $1.25 million of that remaining allocation to spend on restructuring costs. That enables $20.9 million in the entirety to be freed up for use for other purposes. That's why we had structured, in large part, the loan from SCLA to the water district to be $20 million, so they're compatible. Unless there are any additional questions or comments, I'm available. John Seymour is available for any additional questions or comments you might have.
I have motion item number five. Approval of the MOU?
Second.
I have the Victorville Water District Agenda. No revisions to the agenda. Item number three is a consent calendar.
For approval?
Second.
We already took action on item number four. We'll move into the city of Victorville City Council Agenda. No revision?
No revisions.
We have a public hearing. Item number three, it's a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of resolution number 09055. A resolution of the city of Victorville finding and declaring that the public convenience and necessity justify and require the granting of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Christina Menosian and Yurva Menoyasan owners of Best Taxi and Delivery Yellow Star Cab. I will now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I stand before you today as Christina Menosian. I'm the owner and operator of Best Taxi and Delivery Service, also known as Yellow Star. And we've owned the business for a few years now. We've been growing about 30 taxis in the Ano Valley. We're the pretty largest ones there. And we've, we're getting a lot of calls from the city of Victorville. Unfortunately, we can't operate them without a license. So we're here to apply and pretty much get approved and assist the people who live here as well and giving them jobs and taxi drivers to grow it and pretty much grow my business as well. Next to me is Agnes DeVichin. She's the, she's my supervisor. I'm pretty much billing specialist.
Hi, guys. Basically, we churned all our paperwork in and we stand before you to get your approval for running the operations for Yellow Star Cab. We're actually the only functional taxi company in Ano Valley that supplies transportation for everybody in all sorts of transportation, like with wheelchairs and limousines and shuttles to LAX. And we want to give Victorville the same opportunity. We want to do transportations for the community to go to LAX, major casinos, amusement parks. You know, we basically provide the best excellent service in Ano Valley and want to do the best excellent service in Victorville.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. And we're now close to public hearing. Have a motion to approve resolution number 09055.
For approval?
Second.
Item number four, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adoption of resolution number 09056. This resolution is for the same applicant. It's the granting a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Christina Menoyasan and Yurva Menoyasan for non-emergency medical transportation, also known as Apple Valley Shuttle and Tours Limited. I will now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Hello again. We also own AV Shuttle and Tours, and that's the one that's wheelchair accessible. We're trying to help the community out. We are doing business with a lot of major hospitals in Lancaster, Palmdale, LA County, Santa Clarita, and we're trying to grow with here as well. I believe we have close to 10 shuttle services, limousines, under this DBA.
We basically provide the transportation for patients who cannot get out of stretchers. We have gurney beds that can help them, you know, load them up. You know, they don't have to get out of their beds. We can load them up on the gurney, put them in the gurney van, and take them from convalescent homes to hospitals, transportations that they need, back and forth to doctor's appointments. That's the reason we're asking for the non-emergency transportation. We do the same services in Ano Valley, and we're excellent there. There are so many, you know, senior citizens who are so thankful for the service because we can completely do billing to their medical, you know, insurance companies that they don't have to pay for. You know, we have the electrical van, so they have wheelchairs that they can lift. So we have vans that they can, they don't have to move or anything. Our drivers are all trained. They all have CPR certification, first aid certification. All are very well-trained to help, to help the senior citizens, to help patients, basically, with anything, you know. They don't have to move out of their wheelchair. We can completely put them on one of those lifts, lift them up, put them in the van, strap them down. You know, they're all, all our drivers are basically trained how to strap them on so they don't go anywhere and be taken to doctors, you know, appointments in hospitals. Thank you.
I will now close the public hearing on item number four. entertain a motion?
Vote for approval?
Second.
Item number five is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against introduction of Board is number 2241 and the adoption of resolution 09051. Marty, do I read the ordinance now or when it's introduced?
You'd have the public hearing first and then introduce the ordinance, and then once you do that, we need a motion to wait further.
I'll open up the public hearing on item number five. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come up to the podium.
My name's still Joe Vale, and I just saw this item on the agenda tonight. It looks like they're wanting to build 319 homes over by Dulce's Trader Park. Is that correct? That's why I'm reading that? Just for information, even though Cemex Cement Plant is doing much better, I still live in the same place since 1979. We still deal with cement dust, even though their dust collectors are better. And if that's the area you're talking about, fair. The Cemex Cement Plant will have problems. You'll have people upset because of cement on their windshields and on their cars, ruining their paint. It's better, but it hasn't gone away. So if you're interested in that, there you are.
Anyone else wishing to take for or against item number five? There are none. I'll close the public hearing. I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2241 and resolution 09051.
Mayor Cavarias, we need to have the city clerk read the title of the ordinance first.
An ordinance of the city of Victorville adopting planned unit development and development plan PLN 0700123 to allow for the development of a 319-lot, single-family, planned residential development on property generally located north of State Highway 18, south of Interstate 15, east of and abutting the Mojave River, and west of and abutting Stoddard Wells Road, SLPR LLC.
Move introduction of ordinance number 2241, adoption of resolution 09051, and also applying the negative declaration.
And the waiver of the further reading.
Waiver of further reading.
Second.
Item number six is a consent calendar.
Vote for, second.
Item number seven, under written communications, request to adopt resolution number 09057 entitled a resolution of the city council of the city of Victorville authorizing conveyance of real property from the city of Victorville to the OPT Victor Plaza Limited.
For approval?
Second.
Item number eight, request to adopt resolution number 09058 entitled a resolution of the city council of the city of Victorville ordering the vacation abandonment of excess right-of-way of Lorraine Drive at 7th Street.
Vote for approval?
Item number nine, request to approve resolution number 09053 entitled resolution of the city council of the city of Victorville, providing support and authorization for submittal of the Industrial Energy Efficiency Grant funded by the Department of Energy.
For approval?
Second.
Item number 10, request to approve the proposed contract with San Bernardino County Sheriff Department in the amount of $15,644,161.
For approval?
Second.
Mayor Cavarias, can we have some additional discussion on this item?
Sure.
My understanding, obviously, that the amount that we're approving is less than current and that there's going to be no reduction in service. However, it's also my understanding that this council has kept up with the population growth of the city of Victorville as well as continually addressed crime and the corresponding increase in crime that comes with the population increase. I have a real difficult time with, although our current financial situation has put us in a situation where we can't look to add maybe as many deputies as we'd like, I'd still like to have some sort of discussion and perhaps some input from the captain of our, of our police department regarding the additional deputies. My understanding that we've had a population increase of about 3% in 2008. Crime went up 2%. And perhaps Mr. Reynolds could talk about that in ways that your department might be able to address that in light of our current financial situation, and then also talk about maybe perhaps revisiting this during this fiscal year so that if there is opportunity, things turn around, we're able to get the city back in a financial position to do so. I'd like to revisit the possibility of adding deputies. So if you could maybe talk about that a little bit.
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor, council members, Mr. Cox, I've been asked to kind of take a look at our staffing levels and being in office for the first 30 days. I've had an opportunity to meet the staff at the city and at the station as well. I meet with commanders across the Inland Empire monthly. And what I see from most police departments at this time with the economic climate the way it is, is that many are making cutbacks and facing layoffs. This council, I've been involved with this police department since 1986, as a lot of you know. And this council has always been committed to supporting public safety. I believe we are positioned well at this time to take on anything that comes our way. Although we haven't made increases, we have not made cutbacks, and we're very fortunate. Many of the police commanders that I discuss, these staffing levels with today are making layoffs across the board. In 2008, we mid-year, as you're all aware, the council approved some increases. We added a sheriff sergeant to increase the supervision in the field. We added four deputy sheriffs and some clerical staff as well, support staff, if you will. Our crime statistics are very reflective of the rest of the Victor Valley. I think we're in pretty good shape. I'm very confident that our police officers are out there doing a good job. If you ask any law enforcement executive across this nation, do you have enough police officers? Do you need more? They're not going to tell you no. There isn't a police department in this nation that has enough police officers on the job right now. My recommendation would be to this council and our city manager, when times improve, absolutely, we need to stay ahead of the curve. Population increases, if we don't increase public safety, it's very difficult to prevent crime from occurring, putting our citizens in harm's way. And by the same token, I don't want to be the individual responsible for not recommending increases to you that will put our police officers in harm's way as well. That's a burden that I have to deal with. But I think we're positioned very well at this time to handle crime in our city. I don't think there's any alarming numbers that show us that we're losing the battle. We're, we are making some adjustments in staffing to work a little smarter. I'm going to add some of my style differences to what we have in place. But in the months to come, I think you're going to be very pleased. We have some things in the works that are going to be breaking ground, and that will assist in the reduction of crime in our city, and we will continue to work towards that effort. But at this time, I think we're, we're doing well with what we have.
Well, thank you, Kevin Reynolds, and I appreciate you giving us your input on that. I think it's important. This council hears what you think and what you feel. Obviously, if you could have more sheriff deputies, if our budget allowed for it, you would. I just asked this council and our city manager to look at this as we do adopt a budget formally, as the state hopefully adopts a budget. We can kind of gauge, once those things happen, where we're at, and possibly revisit this issue and potentially add some deputies to our streets. Because obviously, with the increase in crime that has occurred, that is, and as well as the corresponding population increase, definitely concerned about that. I know this council is, and I- think, um, maybe something we need to revisit on a more regular basis than just annually, and I would, uh, ask that we do so.
Thank you. Any other questions? I, I just have a comment, and, and, uh, I know that our captain, our police chief has been here for, for many years. He's a Victorville resident, and we have added, uh, police officers almost just every year since I can remember since I've been here ten years.
Correct.
The council, and, and it's correct, you know, the, the, the times are preventing us from adding anymore, uh, staff to the police department. But, uh, as Ryan mentioned, there's the mid-year review, and we have done that in the past. At mid-year review, we have added police if, if our staff or police chief recommends that, and we have the funds, certainly that'll be done. I'd like to thank also the, uh, the sheriff department. The budget is, is, is lower than last year, and it, and I think it came because the, the police officers took a cut in pay, uh, rather than the reduction of, of staff. So best to be commended. And, uh,
That's correct.
Just on a personal basis, uh, Sunday, there was an altercation right next door to me, the neighbors, and I called the police department, and they were there within five, two carts were there within five minutes. The third car was there just right behind him, so.
I'm glad to hear that.
Good job.
Yay.
I was glad to see it.
And if, and if, and that will continue under my watch. Uh, and if, and if it doesn't occur, I'm available to speak to anybody by telephone or at my office, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have item number ten as request to approve. Item eleven is a request to adopt Resolution Number Zero Nine Zero Five Nine, entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Establishing a Court of Ethics for Council Members.
For approval?
Second.
Item number twelve is a request to approve authorization for city manager, manager to enter into an agreement with KXI and make payments to SCE and to approve three, uh, three million dollars for SLA Phase One and Phase Two interconnected projects.
For approval?
Second.
Mayor Cabrealis, may I get a vote for me? Thank you.
Item number thirteen is presentation of report from council members. I'll start with Mr. [inaudible].
Uh, yes, the council was provided by our deputy city manager, Doug Robertson, a draft financial status report, uh, although it's draft as it came to us, this is the same report that was, uh, actually publicly presented to the, uh, where are you, Doug? Where'd you go? Oh, sorry, I missed you. Um, publicly presented to the council at a workshop, um, back in early June, was it? Okay. Um, and I, I would like, I'd like this to be finalized, number one, but number two, um, if we could, at the second council meeting of every, of every month, receive the same report for the month previous. Uh, so in, in that light, would, would like to see the June thirty, uh, oh eight, um, which would be the end of last fiscal year at our next council meeting, uh, along this same format. And I'm, I, I would, uh, state that obviously it's a, it can be a working document. I would encourage input from, um, other city staff as well as the council, but at least it's a start into providing this council with a financial report on a more regular basis. And if I could request that, uh, we receive that as, uh, as an information item that comes to us in our agenda packet, um, and whether it's a part of consent or whatever is not so much a concern to me. If it needs to be discussed further, it could be pulled off of consent, but just so long as we're getting it on a monthly basis, I would appreciate that.
I would like to thank, uh, the staff and all the volunteers who worked on our Fourth of July. It was outstanding, beautiful program. And, uh, the city didn't spend any money on, on the Fourth of July. We did have sponsors. I wouldn't like to name them. We had Dr. Pepper Snapple, the Auto Parket Valley Center, Green de Brnasky in Cantanilla, Kinsel Newcombe in the Dios, and Inland Energy. So I'd like to give our sponsors a round of applause, and thank you very much for making this festival in our Fourth of July. And if you weren't there, you missed a great show.
Mr. Mayor, we had one, one more sponsor for that. Our city manager contributed into that as well.
Well, let's hear it for our city manager. Thank you, Jim. That, any other comments? Uh, not then, um, we'll see the show here for a little bit. Now move for adjournment.